We have a big audience today. All this meeting to order, this is a regularly scheduled meeting of the Persian County Board of Commissioners. Today is Wednesday, October 20th. Our first item of business is to pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Approval of minutes, I think I saw with the Board of Health. Was there another one too?
Yeah, September 15th and 20th. I didn't have any corrections either, so I'll make a motion to approve both of those.
Was there a second?
Yeah, I'll second.
I have a motion and then a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passed. Public input, public comment and discussion or action may be taken on a matter raised under this item of the agenda until the matter itself has been specifically included on that agenda as an item upon which action would be taken. Public commentary will generally be limited to three minutes per person. Anybody on Zoom? Anybody with public comments on Zoom? None, okay. So, number three, review of all agenda items to determine if any do or do not impose a direct and significant economic burden on the business or directly restrict, restrict the operation or expansion of the business.
I didn't see anything.
I didn't see anything.
So I'll make a motion to that.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passed. Road Department, Dan isn't here, he's, he sent me a report. We finished a gravel project including culverts on Herschel Road, south of Dunn Glen. With the recent rain, we started blading several roads, including Raymond, Roseberry, Core, Grass Valley, Finsmaker, and the back for the patch. We hauled sand to Core and to the shop and they tore down the screen plant and brought it back to the shop for some maintenance. They fixed blowouts on Black Canyon Road. They are now doing some last of the season pavement maintenance on Thompson Road, which is where they're at today. He checked on Rochester Canyon Road and there are some blowouts as, as a result of the power line built for Core. Core agreed to help with repairs and they're working through that now. He has a landfill report, he said they cleaned up Grass Valley Transfer Site again and also burned the Emly waste pile. Steven and Ken are in the process of moving the household waste disposal area. Steve has a plan to make it more convenient for everyone and Dan believes it's a good idea. And he says, thank you, have a good day. Buildings and grounds.
Good morning.
Morning.
Since the last meeting, we've been shutting down our water systems. We had an issue out of the ball field that one of the valves sometime towards the end of the year when they were dragging the field, they had broke one of our stem pipes to our valve and we had to dig it up and flood it. So we had to let it dry out for a few days and we've got it rebuilt now, we're just a small rock and it took several days to dig it out. It's four foot down. Did some winter maintenance and on all our heating, air conditioning units, we changed out filters. Made sure everything was ready on heaters and doing the yard maintenance. I have a fuel delivery going out of the airport today after lunch. That's really it, then just, oh, replaced the, got the fire door put in on the break. We were at the extension office yesterday. Also have two other doors that I'm having looked at and priced out, one being for the director's office and the other kitchen door that leads out to the main, the one side of the classroom. That door's got a bunch of holes in it where people have, over time have kept, have pulled it out of the door. It's kind of getting swiss cheese, it's the same thing with the frame. And you have to price on that as well, that has to be a fire rate as well.
How many gallons away, delivered?
Eight thousand.
Eight thousand.
And I believe our price, I had it written down, I had it on the piece of paper, but our cost is going to be about four, 10 or so per gallon after taxes, thereabouts.
Yeah.
Kind of expensive, but.
So what are we charging then?
Well, it depends, I have to figure what the, what the ship it's going to cost to. Right now, our cost, what we're charging is four fifty-two a gallon. I imagine it's going to go up fifty cents to a quarter depending.
Fifteen to a quarter.
What is the problem with it? Pump, because fuel level is low?
Well, we're having issues because unbeknownst to me, and even James was kind of surprised that once we get below 750 gallons, it starts slowing down how fast the fuel comes out. And right now, we're at 500 gallons, so it's not one to pump out very fast. And when the pump gets replaced, they're also going to look at the fuel filter and, because it's a surface mount type of pump and they think there might be some debris and they're going to clean all that up and that also helps with some of the surge issues, I think.
How far out to new dispenser?
Well, he's thinking, when I spoke to him on Monday, he was thinking it'd be no more than two to three weeks. And also I've had the, the state wants to come out and do the weights and measures, but they don't want to do that as hell. Make it pretty obvious it's going to have to be calibrated for that. Other than that, it's been just saying what I'm saying. Any questions?
Good, thank you. Anybody on from fire and ambulance on Zoom?
Sean Burke, Grass Valley Fire Department.
Who's on, Sean?
Yeah, can, this is Sean Burke, Grass Valley Fire Department, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Morning, John.
Good morning. So, burn ban has been lifted in Grass Valley. We've already had a number of folks starting to clean up. We've had some pretty significant moisture out there, so that's been good. Everything's going good at the fire department. We're on track for our completing our firefighter one training, probably in February of next year. So we're, we've completed 13 of 15 chapters on that and they just need to wrap that up and do the skills testing. So we're good, we have 15, actually 16 of 18 authorized members in the department. We recently participated, brought three folks down to administer flu vaccines in Love Lock at the flu pod a couple of weeks ago. So, things are going well and we're just anxiously awaiting any decision on the brush truck and how we might proceed with filling the gap on that truck that's out of service. And that's all I have to report.
Okay. Thank you, anybody need questions of Sean?
Did he want to do the Grass Valley advisory and?
You want to do your other reports, Sean, while you're on?
Sure, so on item 4F, emergency management. So we did conduct our quarterly LPSI meeting on the 13th and good meeting, had really good solid attendance. Started setting the plan for next year's exercises. Got a tentative plan together at least and we'll be closing out this year's exercise requirements. The sheriff and Rod Wilcox from Love Lock Fire are working with me to put together a final report on a hazmat incident that happened over the summer out at Rite Patch, so we can report on that and that will close out our requirements for the year, so all that's on track. I think everybody's probably seen some emails going around from me regarding a inspection from the state health department regarding the COVID vaccination grant. I've talked to a couple of people, Reen has been great and that gave me a bunch of, of input that we can use on that. I still need to digest that a little bit more and make sure that our documentation is actually meeting the state's requirements, but that is going to be a very heavy lift and there's a lot of stuff on there that, you know, I'm just not, I don't know if we have those kind of policies in place or not, so we're probably going to get a work list out of that one. The CERC grants, the OFE grant and the United We Stand grant submitted the quarterly reports on those and I'm working on the quarterly report for the EMP grant. So I think all, other than the inspection which is coming up in about a month, that's, that's the big thing on my horizon at this point in emergency management. Other than the, well, I should also add that it looks like Moderna boosters are going to be authorized here. We primarily administered Moderna in the early days of the vaccination effort and if, if that booster series is authorized the way I think it will be for, you know, those over 65 and people in public safety and that kind of stuff, we'll probably have to have some kind of more significant effort other than going through Marcia's office and Dr. Van Gilder's clinic. We'll probably have to schedule some kind of pod event or something like that to kind of get people those third doses. So that's, that's it for emergency management. For the Grass Valley Advisory Board, our next meeting is this coming Monday, October 25th at 7:00 PM. Looking forward to whichever commissioner is going to come out for that one. Our next big event is Turkey Bingo, our annual kind of big deal event on 19 November, also at 7:00 PM. We're kind of, you know, we're planning for it right now, kind of waiting to see how the COVID thing works out. I'm a little, a little concerned about having that event, you know, in, in a relatively small space. You know, we typically draw between, you know, 50 and 70 people and a little concerned about getting that many people in an enclosed environment if we're still having, you know, a big outbreak of COVID. So we're kind of playing that by ear, but we are planning for it. And then the condition of the community center is good. There is one thing though that remains outstanding there and there's, there's some dead trees that were, somebody sprayed weed killer on them a couple of years ago. Killed all, killed all but two of the trees and I've been asking for someone to come and cut those down. They are dead, dead and I'm concerned that at some point they're going to become a safety hazard if we don't get those knocked down. And that's all I have to report.
Okay, thank you. So maybe we end up doing a, a shot pot again like we did that for the two at the senior center? That it's really the same clientele?
Yeah, I think there's a very real possibility. I mean, I don't know that I really understand what the demand signal is for third doses. Hopefully it's high, I think, I think it's a good thing and I would certainly encourage anyone who's already got the doses to get the third one as well. And so, you know, if the senior center is the right place to have that, I, you know, I think that's a really good idea. But, you know, I guess we just got to get to the details of what's, what and when it's actually going to be authorized here.
Yeah. Okay, good, thank you. Okay. Ambulance report, nobody else came on, Justin? Okay, approval to submit Medicaid provider application on behalf of the Persian County Ambulance Service and designation of authorized signatures, agents, employees, departments to update enrollment information as needed.
I've been working on that application and it's pretty much complete. I just need to know, I, I talked to Debbie Monk, Mauck, sorry, Debbie Mauck from the hospital and you have to put in your board and then also at least one employee. So what they do is put the chairperson in and our chairperson changes every year usually. So someone will need to go in and update and those are things I'm thinking that the EMS person should be doing. But Lacy is offered to be, if I provide Lacy a backup person for it to help with that. So I put her as the employee that we have to list. I just want to make sure that, you know, that's okay with everybody and that somebody and whether, I'm thinking again, that EMS person, if and when we hire that person, working with Lacy should make sure that we're kept up to date and that form is changed as needed. Also, the Medicare one needs some updating too, but I'll work with Lacy so we get that at least up to date now and then we'll go forward. And then the other thing is, in order to submit the Medicaid application, there's a contract that needs to be signed by the chair and I wanted to make sure that that was available for the DA to see and, I mean, that's what everybody has to do. It's not like we have a choice. It's in the packet.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. But it's, it's a requirement and you can't submit the application without, you know, doing that.
But isn't, isn't this agenda item tied to the EMS?
No, it's just.
Well, the EMS person is going to be doing it though, right?
In, in time, right now, we, I'm just trying to get it done for the billing company so that they can start billing Medicaid. And like I said, Lacy's been willing to help me with that, so it's pretty much done. I just need to make sure I have a few things and then there's something for the, the chair to sign this, this contract. But I just wanted to, I didn't want to just do that without permission approval.
So if you could review that.
At the end of the meeting.
Okay. And then once I submit the application, the billing is retroactive to that date, so I would do it today. And then if they have any issues with our application, you know, questions or whatever, they will ask those questions and we'll take care of whatever it is they need and then they would, it would be retroactive to get it.
Okay, so Bryce will review that and get, get back to us soon. So we'll wait till after you review it and then we'll.
We'll have it done this meeting.
Yeah, we'll come back and visit the approval part. So we, we, let's see, Love Lock's not here, right, Jamily? Number six, emergency medical service coordinator slash manager job description review approval. Approval to advertise, hire and set salary.
You're just in time.
I already skipped past you, but come on up.
Okay, ambulance, so the ambulance has been really busy this month from September 23rd till today. We had 33 EMS calls. We had two fire calls and that's not counting from the rescue to the accidents, you know, rescue truck to the accident. Time to count all. Did EMS training last night for procedures of special needs patients, Sean talked that. Fire, still doing inspections, Mike, if I give you a little bit of an update on the inspection stuff. We, on Monday, did firefighter one testing, the written test. We had eight people take that test. It was in good shape and that's about all I got really right now. I mean, it was good, we're working, keeping going on the firefighter one and we're, this, this next few months will be researching, researching, buying all the EMTs, so that's a big project, getting all their information, getting it in. So Marty's working on that and.
I talked to Dan from Far West after I talked to you yesterday and he was going to send you, I think, send you an email, anyway, he's going to contact you.
Yeah, and then also on that, we might, if you want, if we have to get a little more pressure out there and a little more flow, put a fire pumping.
He, he mentioned that, so he's going to talk to you.
So we're going to, we can talk about that, but that would, you could boost that up and you would have plenty of water for anything you want to do. Anything else? Want to move to the?
Yes, we do. So I already kind of read through that, but we have a, in our packet, we have a, a job description. Which is so far a combination of fire department and HR doing some improvements. I, you know, looking through this number, what is it, number four? I think there needs to be more in here on responsibility to get the ambulance billing up and running, fixed and to keep on top of it.
Yeah, I don't think there's enough accountability in this job description. And just as you mentioned, EMT recertifications and training and the Medicare, Medicaid applications and attending regular meetings of the commissioners, even if it's just once a month to give updates on ambulance activities and what's going on with the billing and I had asked Marty for a breakdown. You know, just simple things like how many of the ambulance calls are out in the county versus how many are in the city? How many are transports to the hospital, you know, really simple things that would give us, I think, a better idea of what's happening with the ambulance service. And she did give me some of that, but she didn't have all the reports in, so she, there were 10 that she couldn't tell me at that point. But I think there's not enough accountability.
As far as like, what does it say in there about responsibility for billing? It just says.
All it says on number four, it says oversees input of data from ambulance response reports to ensure correct data is sent to ambulance billing company. And that's all it really says. So there's got to be some more in there.
Like follow up.
Yeah.
On.
So we've got to work some words into that.
Okay.
And then on number two, it says maintain ambulance image trend database, but it should put in something about any other required software. I mean, the image trend is the current one.
Yeah.
But I mean, that could change.
Yeah, well, that's the one that the state requires now, so I mean, it's like, it, it could go a few years and then change. They could change what they want to go to, I don't think you have a whole lot of control over that.
So, I mean, I don't know if we want to actually name the database as much as say state required software or something like that.
Yeah.
You know, something general enough that it covers it for future years too. But like the training, I mean, I think the EMS coordinator or manager should maintain the training records too for EMS.
And she does.
But.
It should be in there, I guess.
There's nothing in here, is what I'm saying. And I'm sure there's a lot that the person currently does that's not in here. And so those were my concerns, just a few.
Do you want to take a stab at reworking?
I could work with Karen and we could go with that again, we've kind of revised it a second time and.
I know, you met just a couple of days ago.
Yeah, so if you got the notes on what they want, if there's anything else you want, if you give them to Karen.
Well, I would have you look at the Lander County one that Sean submitted. Because there's quite a few things in there that are.
That are missing out on that one.
Yeah.
So anything else you want to do, Ben, you don't want to go any further than until we get that job. So when you get, when we, so once we get that and it comes down to the hiring part of it, how are you, how, how are you going to put that together? What, what kind of panel are you going to put together for the job descriptions? I mean, to hire that person, the interviews?
Well, we're not there yet, but.
But who will be?
We'll be there soon, so we'll put a team together to, to do that and, and you guys will be involved.
Just as long as we're involved in that, but I think you probably, you know, should be involved in that too.
I, I think the whole commission should actually interview.
Yeah. Reen?
I just want to make a comment. The ambulance schedule for this current year is 307,637. We have budgeted 170,000 for the ambulance. I want it to be very well understood that we cannot go over that amount. We did not budget per salary or any of the benefits, so that money's going to have to come from one of the other line items to cover it, so we don't have a budget.
So what's the total?
The total for this year is 307,637.
One person, which you gotta save in the math for the reason, huh?
As long as you don't buy an ambulance.
Yeah. Well, if we get the ambulance through the COVID million dollar, whatever it is.
We may or may not be able to do that.
But I mean, if it, if it could happen, that's, that's.
Could save that fund if we could.
Well, or also we could wait until we get some more money in from the billing, because that's what the whole thing was supposed to do. And, you know, you're.
I'm sorry.
But your ambulance is running fine right now, is it not?
Oh, yeah, we're at, with that ambulance right now, we're like almost 60,000.
So, I mean, it's something that can wait for a little while.
It could, but if we could get another one on COVID, I'd make sure it was in there.
Yeah, but we've got a lot of needs under COVID too, so we'll just see. I'm not saying no, I'm just saying it's something we have to discuss.
You had a comment, Bryce?
I just had a question. I was told that if we hire the EMS coordinator position, that it could preclude the county from applying for the Saper grant.
That would exclude?
Preclude us, would prevent us from applying for the Saper grant.
I can answer that question. We don't have any money.
Well, the safer grant is not for continuation employment. If that's kind of revealing, you already got somebody in place.
No, it would be more, I guess the rationale behind that is that by, by filling the position, the county's acknowledging that it has the money. To pay for that position, and so we wouldn't be able to ask for that, the safer.
Well, I think.
Whereas if we didn't fill the position now, we could apply for the Saper grant. And perhaps use the Saper grant to pay for this position in addition to other full-time positions for EMS.
Well, I think there's two pieces of that, and, and one of them, you can augment your staffing with it, much like the city arena just did. So, you know, that, that's one piece of this, I said, I think a few times. That safer grant has to be tied to fire. So if you're gonna hire someone for the safer grant, they're gonna have to be that firefighter one qualification along with the EMS qualification. There's no provisions in the EMS and the safer grant to hire just an EMS person because it's an assistance to firefighter grant. That helps.
So let's, couldn't you use that also for, I mean, you hire your first person, but to supplement your, to build your group up, you could go. If you get the safer grant, just hire EMS on the, the second person or if you fit the second person, that would maybe qualify for the safer.
So whatever that business plan is gonna look like moving forward, but we gotta have that business plan in place of, you know, how this is gonna look. And certainly you could do that, but again, that's separate from fire.
Or we need to tie it all together.
What about?
EMS separate, you do assistance to fire branch, or you.
So Mike, what about, is it called the Siren Grant? That's for EMS, isn't it?
The Siren Grant is. It's called the Siren Act.
Okay.
And it is for EMS, it's a, it's a potential for two hundred thousand dollars. I have not seen the application for twenty twenty-one yet, the last one was twenty twenty. And that could be used for personnel training and equipment, for, and it's for rural areas. It's not for areas.
Right. So that's something too, and then that's something that I think the EMS position, job description has to have in it as well, is grant. Application and administration. You know, for EMS, because the only way that position would be able to continue would be if it's funded. And not by the general fund, but funded by itself, it has to do the billing, it has to do. It has to be, administrate that grant.
Yeah.
And make sure the grant's done on time. And in all the paperwork, it shouldn't be left to Reen's office to administer the grant.
And then.
Well, Reen, you, once they get that grant, you're kind of responsible for it, right?
I'm responsible to make sure it all balances out.
And to pay the vouchers.
She shouldn't be tracking down the emotions.
Yeah, she shouldn't be doing it.
Just saying, hey, you've got this building, which, you know, that's, I'm just the tail end to make sure it's all amounts for the audit.
So, to kind of come full circle on the grants, I worked more with Lacy on that than I do with Reen in our grants. And so when it comes to the QFRs, the quarterly financial reports that go in, I put those in. And then it gets copied to Lacy and then Reen gets the check, so.
I should also get that copy back from the department.
The QFR? Yeah, that, that's easy, cause that's all, these are all called FEMA Go systems now, so they're, they're all online grants. But I would caution, because we don't know what the Siren is gonna be put back in. I mean, long term, I would really caution on putting a position in that is predicated on receiving grants. Because you could have a position and then maybe the AFG is such a competitive grant. You don't get it, or the Siren isn't funded, or whatever, then you put all this work into a position. I mean, I think, I think supported by grants probably will continue on, but I would caution about. Putting all your eggs in one basket and, and make it part of that billing process that helps offset the salary and the GEMT part of it. Maybe the contractual things that I, may or may not say that I brought to the last.
Well, the whole intent of this position is for it to fund itself with the ambulance. The money is received from the ambulance services.
And not necessarily.
But I don't know how you can say that, cause you don't know how, how that's gonna, we could, our calls could go down, they could go up either way, it's like. This position needs to have this position to, to, to take care of this.
I understand that, but this community doesn't have the funds to pay for.
How many of your, how many of your. Departments in the county pay for their own, own, own. Brings in enough money to pay for themselves? How many of them?
That's not the point, the point is, we know, and you know.
Yeah.
That we're way behind on collecting funds for.
Yeah.
The work that you do.
And we're getting that squared away.
And we are getting it, that's why we need to get this. Job description tied down.
Yeah.
So that person can do that, and yes, that will fund that, that job.
And I believe it will, but you can't, just like Mike says, you can't guarantee that you're, okay, so you're gonna, you're gonna have, the, the fund's gonna build up. It's gonna take care of that person that's gonna be the, the manager, right? Okay, in seven years, your ambulance is gonna be, do for a new ambulance, you're gonna have two hundred thousand dollars. Are you gonna be two hundred thousand dollars to good then, or are you, what are you gonna do for that?
I think that's something that has to be looked at, once the billing and everything is caught up to date and it's done. They haven't been able to bill Medicaid because the Medicaid application expired.
Yeah.
I mean, seriously, what I understand, that could mean at least five hundred dollars on those bills that we're not getting.
That's right.
Yeah.
And there hasn't been anybody doing any, we don't have a company that goes after people that don't pay their bill either.
We need a collection service.
That's right.
And those, you know, those are things that need to be designated. So once sharp bills and after a certain period of time, I have the name of the, or the company that the hospital uses. But these are things that have, have just kind of not been handled.
Yeah, well, they were being handled.
They were being handled by RINSA.
By RINSA.
And then when we switched, it just like it fell all apart.
Yeah.
And I mean, that doesn't. There is a responsibility to the EMS person.
Yeah.
To do all this.
But then you're expect, you were expecting that person to do all of that and keep all that up and be a volunteer. So I can see now, if we go to a paid person and we get this set up, we should be good, but I'm, I would hate to say it's gonna guarantee that you're gonna collect. I don't know how you'd say, it needs to collect enough money to pay for that person, or maybe even another person, but there are things that are gonna come up that the.
And those are things that can be addressed at the time.
Yeah.
If the billing's being done timely, if everything is being done the way it should be, that's something for the commission to look at at that time.
Yeah.
Whether I'm on the board at that time or not, you know, whether it's a few years down the road, you know, even two years down the road. So, but I do have a question. How did the ambulance? Become a part of the county as such? How did the county actually set up?
Uh.
Our, where we've got an account for the ambulance, cause it's all volunteer.
Right.
And, you know, we do the same thing for fire, I mean, how did all that come about?
I think it's, Mike, the county is responsible for, there was actually a.
No, there's not.
No, there's no law that says you have to provide.
There's no law that says the county has to have an EMS. The way that it started is that first you had the fire department. And then the need arose to have an ambulance service. And so the county and the city agreed that they were going to share the funding for the ambulance service. And that the ambulance service would work under the umbrella, the corporate umbrella of the fire department. But the ambulance service was never designated a separate entity, and it's never officially been designated as a part of the fire department. So the ambulance service is just kind of floating out there with some volunteers, and it's running with public funds, but it's not considered a separate entity. But to say that the Persian, the Persian county is responsible for it is not correct either. Persian county funds it, but it's not a Persian county entity.
So they don't really have to have a county ambulance then, right?
No, they don't.
They don't.
But once you have a county ambulance, there's a need for it, I mean, it needs to be provided. But I think that the quest that the board has is, is how do you provide that service at the most cost-effective way possible? I know that the county in the past, the county attorney shot to RINSA to find out how much of a cost for them to do it. At an HGH, but I don't think that that's happened for several years. And now that the county's talking about maybe making. Some, some big changes in EMS and increasing the budget of EMS, perhaps it's time to explore again. Whether it wouldn't be more cost-effective to have HGH come in and provide family and service.
Or Banner.
Or Banner for the entire community, because they can, they can, they can absorb all of this need. Because they have economies of scale, if we paid them three hundred fifty thousand dollars to do it, they could staff a few people here and there. I think it's worth exploring.
Cause yeah, I thought that subcommittee was going to do that though.
No, the subcommittee was never tasked with that.
So is that yours, is this what you want to do? Is that what you're saying?
That I'm saying, I'm saying that the county should, should explore every option available to it. So that this service, it's a need, it has to be provided, but it needs to be provided in the most cost-effective way possible. And if after they solicit some bids for these other entities, if it's cheaper to have them do it and they can do it just as well. Then I think that this board would be remission its obligations as a board not to, not to have, not to have some other issue covered.
So what do you want to do?
Well, we're not gonna approve the job description today anyway, because it needs more work.
Yeah.
And I would continue working with HR on that job description and what needs to be done. What do we have to do to go out to bids? Do you actually just call them, or do you have to do something in writing? What do you?
Well, because, because it's a, a public contract, I think that we would need to advertise and just things like that. Can take.
And then we have to put that on an agenda to approve going out to do that.
Yeah.
I, I'm, in my mind, I'm thinking that this position isn't even gonna be in place until like January or later. E, even if we did everything, by the time we advertised, by the time we did whatever, so.
It's getting that close.
The hard thing about this is that very much the budget process, when these decisions should be made, that. Put this in the budget for a brand new position that's over a hundred thousand dollars after benefits and salary. It's hard to shoehorn that in in the middle of a financial year.
Right.
So.
So I think maybe on our next, sorry, in our next agenda, we need to put on there about going out for requests or proposals or whatever it is. And advertise for that. And at least see what it would cost us.
So do you think that the public would be more receptive for another company coming in or doing that than to have the people that have been taking care of them for the last fifty, sixty years? You think that would be a good idea?
I think the public is interested in economics as well.
I think they're interested in how they get taken care of also.
But.
And they are.
I'm positive of that, I bet you're looking, I mean, you could, I mean, you could go ahead and do your proposals and stuff, but I'll tell you what, we've been doing this since. We, in two more years, we've been doing it a hundred years, the fire department, and the county has basically only had to pay for a budget. To, to, to keep the equipment in shape and that, and the volunteers have been doing it for them. Now, the same thing happened in Tonopah, Tonopah got to this part, the, the volunteers, they decided they were gonna do something else, the volunteers were then. They went and had to hire a company to come in and do it, that lasted a couple of years, and they found out that's so expensive and, and the type of care they were getting. That they went back to the volunteers and now they have a department that's paid.
They just don't.
So I'm just kind of, there's all different ways to look at, and Bryce, I, I think you think that maybe it would be a better thing to. Give bids and see how it looks, but if you think about what the public wants.
Well, Rodney, I don't, the assumption is that someone coming from the outside community would not provide the same level of care. And I don't think there's any, any evidence at all to back up that assumption.
Yeah.
And if I don't make these recommendations to the board, I'm not doing my job.
It can't hurt to contact other agencies to see if there is an interest.
So one other thing is, because this would be a public contract, it's for emergency services. I don't think, I think that there's an exception for the bidding process, but I'll have to take a look at it. If there's no exception under the rule, it's been a while since I've looked at it, and I just kind of spit all this because it just, it just came to my mind as we were talking about it. If there's, if there is an exception to it, then I will prepare some, some bid information. And then I'll send it out to other entities, Jim and I talked about it last night. And then if there is, is, if there's not an exception, then I'll put together a bid packet that can be on the agenda.
Okay, so you can look at it and see which way we need to go.
But currently Humboldt General supplying ambulance service for Emily in Grass Valley.
Well, no, they don't supply.
Grass Valley.
They handle the calls, but they're, they don't have a contract with Persian County to do that.
No, there's no contract, but they handle the calls, they provide the service.
So Mr. Chairman, Mr., Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
This, this is Sean Burke, may I comment, please?
Yes.
So it is true that Humboldt General provides ambulance service in Grass Valley. But they are doing that primarily because they're taking those patients to Humboldt General Hospital. So a couple of the things you ought to consider as you, as you look at contracting with outside agencies is. What is that gonna do to Persian General Hospital? Because if, if HGH gets the contract, or if Banner gets the contract, they are gonna be incentivized fiscally. To take that, those patients to their home hospital. And I, I would bet you good money today that, that, that Persian General depends quite a bit on the revenue out of their emergency department. So there's a system, as I put, as I put in the original report on this whole EMS issue. This, this whole thing needs to be looked at as a systems problem. So, so you know, when I hear things like, uh, we need to pursue the most cost-effective solution. I think it's extremely short-sighted to focus on the, on the dollar number attached to one person's salary. When it's gonna have an impact on the hospital there, it's gonna have an impact on the community in terms of service, because. You know, you cannot beat a good volunteer service in terms of, you know, the way they treat their patients, and I, I firmly believe that. Uh, and it's gonna have, and you know, it's just gonna have these broad impacts across the county, not to mention the fact on, so. You're just gonna uninvite all the hard-working volunteers at Love Lock Fire Department from doing what they've been doing to save a couple of bucks. Uh, so that they can, you know, that, that's the thanks that they get for getting out of bed at two in the morning. So before you go down that road of, um, you know, trying to save a few dollars on one person's salary. I, I hope, I hope the board is prudent enough to take a systems perspective on all the other problems it's gonna cause. And if you want to ask about how communities are being served, you should call up the good people in Orevada and ask them what kind of service they're getting, or McDermott. Ask what kind of service they're getting from HGH, that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Sean. Okay, so we will work on viewing, Karen, work on.
On the job.
On that job description.
Anything else, a question?
Oh, thank you.
Thank you. Oh, there's one more.
Mike, I have another question, just a plan C for maybe future reference, I've looked at. Uh, another grant slash loan program through USDA. So I, I can't say that they get the grant or not, but there certainly are some very low-interest government loans. That potentially might be an avenue for an ambulance on a five-year loan type of thing, and budget into the payment. You know, each of those five years, so I kind of looked at that program, that's something you want to look into and, and look at a forward for your budget cycles. Rather than put it all out on my mom's stuff, so that's out there and I've got more information.
And the city used something similar to that for their police vehicles. They used a USDA loan.
So you can get some information on it?
I have some, yes.
Okay. So we can use that. Okay, thank you. Safety, and we have a, a report.
Um, would you like me to read it? Okay. Health Department just had our annual flu pod on September thirtieth. We did a total of two hundred and sixty-eight shots. The turnout was better than expected, but down from last year. We were at the elementary and high school giving flu shots on October thirteenth, a total of thirty-eight shots were given. There hasn't been any update as of today, if and when we will start to give a third dose of Moderna. No update on. No update on whether or not Pfizer will be approved for children's five years through eleven. She will give Cheryl will give updates as she receives them from the CDC in Carson City. Safety Department, our next safety meeting will be November second at nine o'clock. We are working on getting our safety manual updated. Safety courses are on track for all county employees. And our next building assessment will be on November thirtieth at nine o'clock. Cemetery Department. All cemeteries look amazing. The Buildings and Grounds Department, along with the Juvenile Youth Group. And the Eagle Scout Scouts have done a great job in cleanup. We will be ready to spray come spring. Still in the process of entering information into our new data system. There's been several burials and all have gone well. Uh Road Department has cleared away trash that was building up on the east side. Of Big Meadow Cemetery. Terry, we are now down two board members since the passing of Sherry Pierce this past week. She will be missed. Her passion was our cemeteries and she was an encyclopedia of information. And that's from Cheryl Hawes.
Any questions on that report? Uh Economic Development. No, nobody on there. That brings us to the IT Department. So you have a Department update and and a report and then we have a update on possible sites to rent for the IT Department.
As far as a department update. Been working lots and lots of support tickets. There's. Interesting issue with. That's with Microsoft licensing. Then pretty sure I tracked down to. The versions of Windows that were running in certain places. So. We're really interested to get all of our stuff updated to. Ten and. Uh at least. At this point, Windows Server twenty nineteen. Especially since now that Windows eleven has been officially released, we're going to be on. Countdown until Windows ten is.
They do that on purpose.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Absolutely. It's. I mean, Microsoft is a business and their business is their software. That's how they make money. Especially on commercial stuff. There've there've been quite a few. Meetings over. Broadband and getting that project moving forward. And actually, uh the contracts from AT&amp;T should be. By coming to us any day now. You might actually get them in there. I think they're sending a copy of his backup, just to make sure that they get this on. And yeah, there's there's um there's some. Possible sources of additional funding for broadband projects coming down the pipe. We're just waiting to hear the actual details. Charles was in on that meeting yesterday. So that'll be that'll be nice if we can get some more money to partner with. ISPs to es- especially on a residential service side. I think that's where the biggest need. Commercial is there's a high, well. If everything's high priority, how do you? Yeah, there's 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 some funding to these kind of. And then the other thing I have are the. Some of the properties that Larry and I looked at for a. Longer term IT department. Um so if we want to move into that, that's. So Larry. Larry and I looked at a couple of properties and. Probably the i- if you wanted to make a decision today. Uh the the rental that I would recommend is the one right here on Main Street.
So let's let's back up a little bit. Last last week, we went for a ride and 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 looked at different sites. And we had a couple of different ones. One of them I did go visit. Inside the building. The other one, I placed a phone call to them. They did not return my phone call for. Let's say obvious reasons. And then yesterday, you and I went and looked at that site. On Main Street together.
Yes.
And then we went and looked at another site.
Yes. Yeah, we we looked at we looked at a site on we looked at a site on Main Street.
The one next to the dentist office, okay.
And then we went and looked at another one down the street on Cornell. Was it the Love Lock Plaza? Check traders.
Oh, check, okay, that one.
Yeah, Love Lock Cable. And either location. Is going to take some work to adapt it for our use, obviously, because they're. They're not ready made for for IT. And how much work depends on. Really depends on how much modification the owners will let us do.
That you need to do.
Right.
Yeah, and what they will let us do.
Right.
The first site, the one on Main Street is, I mean, it's actually move in ready. Other than doing what you need to do for your racking and 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 desks and that kind of stuff. The other site, the one on Cornell, is a different story. It's, you know, it's all one big area and you would actually have to partition off. Uh an area for IT. Uh so a lot more involved in it.
Yes.
Is it the site on Main Street larger than the site on Cornell?
No, the site on Cornell is actually larger in terms of square footage.
So how much is the rent on the one on Main Street next to the dentist?
Five fifty.
Five fifty. That where DVI was?
Yes, was.
Was.
There, I believe they're now in the same office as we.
It has a. Air conditioning, it had his its own electric service. It has heat, of course. The heat is in included in the rent. The water is included in the rent. Uh so it's not a separate bill. The only utility bill we would have is the electric.
And then you'd have to have internet or.
Oh, yeah.
So what else would you need to do besides moving your desks and equipment over?
So to to set it up as office space, there wouldn't be, there wouldn't be a whole lot. I would I would want to, I would want to see if. It would be possible to put in. So the the space, just to kind of. Kind of draw it out for you. It's basically kind of a long thing rectangle.
Yeah. Has a bathroom.
Yep. There is a entryway. Double doors. Bathroom there. And a closet. There and then. Back door over here. So this, so this is where you come in from the street.
Okay.
Um then there's kind of a reception area with the bathroom. Then you go through the doors and there's a bigger space with a closet and a back door. I would like to see about putting in some sort of camera or. A a counter to partition off. Just walk in access from that front area to that back area.
And you would need cameras too for security?
Yeah. I, yeah, we we definitely want to secure the site. And then. Uh as far and then we and then some shelving. For store for equipment storage. And then. There there will probably be, there's probably be some incidental stuff like. Well, if if I were to, if I were setting up for another person.
Another workbench and whatever.
Another workbench.
There's room for three in there if they really had to.
Yeah, I could, yeah, al- along this wall, I could. Uh I I wouldn't want to do more than two because I want, I need places for storage, so I could. Probably do one over here, a workbench over here and a workbench over here and rest shelving for storage. And then with that and the whole space, there's probably room for three desks. You know, because we could, we could put one up in the front reception area and two in the back. If this were to be, if if we were allowed to and this were to be a more permanent home for IT and IT services. I would want to section off part of this to be a data room. So that would be. So that would probably involve rearranging where people where people work. So that we could have a secure data center.
But to start with.
To start, to start with, for a longer term, we're we're not borrowing space that people will potentially need back. That would, that would be the space that I would recommend.
That's the scale. Yeah, right, it's the scale.
And then we probably would need to put in an alarm system too for security. Um and then cleaning service, I would guess.
Well, we have our.
Yeah, I I know. Yes, but I mean, you have to think about that too, that they would.
And they are, they, I asked if they were uh would consider a lease so we could get the price down a bit. And they do not want to lease its month to month.
What about the other facility?
Down is much more.
That's much more up in the air?
Yeah.
We don't need up in the air. We need, we need to solve the problem. So to me, the one on Main Street is is a nicer facility.
It is, and it's ready.
And it's ready. And with just a few things for right now. If you had to be moved right away, you could be moved.
Right.
Um at least to work.
And we really should, you know, I mean, they know we are interested in it, but we really shouldn't wait. And you you risk losing that site.
I agree. Yeah, so I don't have any problem with going forward with making a motion to approve. Going into a month to month rental agreement with whomever it is for that facility on Main Street. Next to the dentist office. And I'll second that.
Good job. We have a motion and a second to move forward on leasing or leasing. Renting a space for the IT department to relocate. Although in favor of the motion. All right, motion.
And I mean, it's going to take a little bit for you to get everything arranged and.
Right.
But I mean, if once we enter into the rental agreement, it's tied up, so.
We'll go over and talk to them again and.
Sure.
Because we got to talk, but one thing that we have to talk to them about is the the front door. I don't know if you've ever been in the dentist's office, but they're. This one, this one sticks to.
Yeah, the 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 frame of the door is too heavy. Well, the door is too heavy for the frame.
Yeah.
So it.
So it needs some work.
So who owns that?
The dentist.
The dentist does, okay.
Not sure which dentist, but.
But anyways, it's through the dental office.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyway, thank you for doing that.
We have a nine forty coming up. Lacy Donaldson?
I don't really have an update.
Two two corrections.
Good morning.
So the the first two, I think they're kind of self explanatory.
Oh, yes, thank you, Lacy. I've done so many, I forgot, I forget what where I am and I'm so sorry. I I think Dr. Palm's facility burned.
Yes. They 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 worked on planning it up and have finished their job.
I try and write notes down here so that parcel sold. Uh had to remove. BMH because it has a new owner and the next. One. Oh, this is, this is. This was asking for forgiveness because of. Um the father deceased in two two thousand four, the son moved it, of course, without permits in two thousand and ten. And someplace on muddy road that fell in hell. And so there's no way to really collect. So that's what that one will be. Asking that taxes, I guess, would be forbidden because everyone is deceased and the manufactured homes fell apart and I don't know. Where it went, I, you know, this was part of my manufactured housing. I'm trying to clean up those accounts and.
So here, I'll make a motion to approve the corrections to the tax rule.
I'll second. And and I can't deactivate the accounts without you all saying yay or nay, so. If I don't deactivate them, it just keeps accumulating an unsecured.
We have a motion in a second. All of your favor.
So are you going to stay for the next one?
And then the next, um I filled out the forms that I created as a current assessor my first year in office because. Because these are ordinances. There should be some type of documentation for landfill and TV. And this lady owns both the desert pavement and the covered wagon. And and her daughter is representing her and I I gave Lacy the email. I don't know if you have it, but she, due to COVID. She has been stranded in China and cannot come back. And so she's asking for relief on her landfill and TV assessments to be removed from the tax roll. Since there's no occupancy.
Is it just for this this year?
That's my understanding.
Just for the one year.
Twenty time. And I mean, probably those buildings should be.
Demong.
Looked at and given obsolescence. I mean, they've been, in my opinion, very gracious about paying their taxes. I can't say thoroughly on time. I would have to look on our correction side to see that, but. You know, at least her conscientious and she's reaching out from China. She cannot leave at this time. So it's up to you all if I can pursue the correction to Lacy, but I don't remove these without. Bringing them forward because they're an ordinance.
She just wants the landfill and the.
TV assessments removed.
For this fiscal year. So I'll make that.
So some relief.
I'll make that motion. I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. All of them.
So then I'll go back and get those cleaned up for Lacy. And and so now you'll be, am I staying here for the nine forty or? Okay.
Couple minutes.
Do you want me to step down so someone else can come up?
We just have to wait a couple.
Okay.
I'd say Merry Christmas, everybody.
Well, I can approach Bryce if it's okay. Our dev net trainer is willing to drive out. She will not be able to stay several hours next Wednesday if you're available, Bryce, and do. A FaceTime, if you will, and show you the software and what goes into. This future goal of landfill increases.
Okay.
So maybe we can firm up a time. She just said, you know, just to make you aware that she cannot do an entire day due to her health.
That would be a lot of dev net in one day. Think a couple hours.
Yes, I'll let, if you want to get back to me with your schedule, I know that you probably have. I I don't know what days court is or et cetera, but she's she felt it would.
Twenty seven should work.
If it'd be. She feels that you seeing it will help all of us under. She feels that you seeing it will help all of us understand.
So do you have anything else to report other than?
Just working along, trying to get the, um, assessment notices ready to go out and finishing our appraisal cycle.
Not to kill the suspense or anything, but Lori and I are going to recommend that the board postpone the first reading of this ordinance so that we can have that meeting. Specialists. Uh, because maybe after getting a better idea, uh, and seeing how that that works, there may be adjustments to how. The assessments are set up, not to their number and then not to their amount, but just. How, how the assessment process occurs. And we have plenty of time because technically this won't go into effect until July first.
July next year.
And, and, and I have a couple recommendations, I'd like to ask for a language change in one area. You know, there's some things that, um, could really, if we're going to do this, be cleaned up, but she can take Bryce on the journey of the software. Where I cannot, to show exactly how this and what will be involved.
Okay, so it's nine forty, uh, we do have a timely event. I mean, you want to read through it or you want to run this?
I would just ask that, uh, postpone or table that go. The next until the next meeting. Forgot about that, yeah, we'll have to readvertise the first reading, so.
So, right, one, one thing that, and, and, and we talked about it early on was, is. The way ag is in there, is that correct?
I did not bring the ordinance, so I'm sorry.
Assessment, it's not a tax.
It's an assessment, so is that what you're here for now?
Yes.
There is agricultural industry. There were several things that we had talked about changing, and I don't know if those actually got changed. And like vacant land and some other things that you brought up.
This, this might be the prior, or is this the current, is three forty-nine the current?
No, that's the one that's approved.
That's the one that's approved that we've used prior? Where is ag, reduction of assessment, review for modification and appeals?
Is it the bottom?
Under what, what number is ag?
It's, it's right at the, the top of that, of the list where it gets in, go back to the.
No, where it has the.
Well, you have a multiplier, but what does the multiplier represent? I, I need a definition, I'm not understanding, to be honest with you. So a multiplier of two, um, would be. Two hundred and forty dollars currently, but where are you describing why would it, why would ag industry? Acquire that? That's what I'm looking for, and I, and I don't see it, am I missing it?
Perhaps we should not do this in a public.
We have to revisit it.
Because I have some of these similar questions that, I mean.
The only thing that we were changing from three forty-nine to three fifty was the effective.
Right, that's the multipliers that we apply, but what's the definition? That, that's my concern, and I think. That's what it's called, so, you know, it's a point one for one twenty, two would be two forty. It, it's very strange, and, and that's what I don't know how to talk about, how the DevNet system will acknowledge what. I believe was written for ABS.
If you have a base rate of ten dollars and your multiplier is two, that's how it works. I don't know if multiplier needs to be defined in the statute.
I'm just looking for ag industry, what would you call ag industry, but like you said, maybe we shouldn't be doing this now. And I will say one language change I would like to recommend when it's time is that. The ordinances have always said that if the entity is exempt, it, the landfill or TV must be built on the unsecured rule. That makes no sense to me if there's a parcel to attach it to. I mean, if you want it to be unsecured, that's fine, but then when they don't pay, then I'll be having to reach out for statute. To our DA for help, so there are some things that could really be cleaned up.
You really need to work with Bryce then on language and how we, because we don't want to make this any harder for you or anybody.
It's very doable, it's just, we all need to understand the software more and what goes into the billing process. So, if, if, I appreciate you holding off until Bryce can hear from Roxanne. And whoever else wants to be at the meeting is fine. So I'll try and set that up.
Yeah, we're not trying to make it harder, in fact, we want to make it easier, so.
Okay. We postponed that item.
So I, I want to reiterate, that ordinance has been adopted. The only thing that's being changed, there's no effective date on the ordinance. So if you would like to see changes to the ordinance, I think it's probably best to discuss them. Call me, or I, I could meet with you, Carl, I'm not trying to discourage you from voicing your concerns in the meeting, but. I don't have the ordinance in front of me because I knew that we were gonna postpone it. So if you're going to refer to the ordinance, I'd like to have a copy of it. And then if you want changes to the ordinance, the effective date is going to, is going to have to be addressed. And then perhaps these changes can as well.
Well. I oppose not only the magnitude of the change, but the timing of the change. I currently pay a hundred and twenty dollars on two different pieces of property, so that's two hundred and forty dollars a year. I go to the duck twice per year with a couple of cans, so if we figure four cans, that's sixty dollars a can. With the new rate that goes up to over six hundred dollars. So that means it's going to cost me a hundred and fifty-four dollars per can to go to the landfill. I, I think that's not only excessive, but, uh. Currently, we're looking down the throat of a drought, my water issue, dish of water a lot this year was one third. Next year, I'm expecting it to be zero, now the six hundred and four dollars is gonna put me in bankruptcy. No, but the twenty-seven thousand dollars of other taxes may. When my income is zero for two or three years in a row, it's really tough. And I would rather see this on a per-use basis rather than a blanket. Across the board, I think that's horribly excessive. Uh, as far as the Correll issue, there's a multiplier for a Correll. Nothing from my Corrells in twenty years. Why do I have to pay extra just because I have Corrells?
It's a good point, I think, I mean, and that's why I brought up the, uh, the ag issue on it. What, with the, the two multipliers. So it needs, it needs to be addressed.
And, and I see in there, there's a multiplier for vacant land, I'm, I'm paying on two of.
Those things that we had talked about when we adopted the ordinance that I thought we had changed. And we'll have to go back to the minutes because they were.
What you, what you've given me is a draft, that's it. This is a graph, this is.
That's all that I could get from.
Okay, so we. Me, do you have anything?
You don't want to jump into this, right?
Yeah, Lori already.
I'm just a lightning rod of controversy.
Tell me.
As far as the ordinance goes, Carl, I'll, I'll take a look at it and I'll make sure that, um, the ordinance draft that you've given me is. Is, is, is the same as the, the draft, this went through several iterations, and I don't think that this is the final. You know, as far as comments that were made about the volunteer fire department and whether the county ought to. Explore other options for EMS coverage. So no one's trying to displace the volunteers, but I think that this board needs options to look at. And, uh, you know, in addition to having cost-effective EMS services. This county also deserves the best services that they can afford, and we're talking about paramedic level services. Not EMT level services. And there's no guarantee that if an outside entity comes in that those volunteers will be displaced because they could work. Handing glove, um, with Ramso or HGH or Banner or whoever it is that. Uh, perhaps is going to submit a bid, and even if bids are solicited. It doesn't mean that this board is gonna make that decision, and so I think it's careful not to make those assumptions. And to appreciate the direction that the board has taken in trying to address a problem. And then addressing this problem, like I said before, this board needs options, and, and just one solution is going to fix it. As far as, uh, my office report, uh, we're gonna be hiring or conducting interviews the first week of November for, uh, Deputy Public Guardian. And, uh.
So we better vacate an, an office space, huh?
No, that's not the deadline by any means, we're just gonna be, uh, conducting the interviews and then hopefully we can hire someone. And then, you know, we'll float that person, we have like a, a floating little desk in our conference room that that person can use until Justin can relocate. And when Miss Justin is our neighbor, it's nice to have the IT guy next door, because your problems can be addressed before everybody else, so. We'll miss Justin. No, I, I, everyone that is supposed to be, Bryce and his staff, James and his office, they've been great. So, um, I really appreciate everyone who's made space.
Well, you won't know what to do with your own space, huh?
Okay, that's it, uh, Judge Stevens, uh, Jerry Allen is not here, I think he's, uh. We have a few minutes, we could go into, I have number eight, or number six. Which is grant applications, awards, review and approval of grants. Or. I can say you might as well make, make your way up here. For the eleventh, uh, judicial district, Dairy Field Airport, Drug Court. Uh, eleventh judicial district, emergency management, rec. board, senior standard law enforcement, library, pool pack grant. Application for ADH client doors, community, uh, review of policy and procedure.
So I went through my grant drawers, and these are all of the grants that I have applications and or sub. And some of these might have already been approved in previous meetings, I was just doing an overall start as of July first. So that you would know what we're working on for this this quarter.
You have a lot of grants that you.
There are a huge amount. Dan Baldini from Juvenile has acquired several grants this year, one of them, the youth apprentice grant. Was put on hold with COVID, and he has received three different grants, which will carry it clear through to twenty twenty-five. Because they're releasing that money now that was held back a couple of years ago. So he's got a grant for twenty-five, twenty-four and twenty-two, I think it is, for grand total of almost sixty-three thousand dollars.
So the administrative costs that you, that we charge, eleventh judicial district. Does that cover enough to cover your costs for all these grants? You know, it's good to see it like this because I had no idea, I mean, we do approve a little bit here, a little bit there.
So my plan is I will keep this master list, but then as more come in, if any come in, then I'll just add to them and I'll bring just the new ones. And get them on the agenda.
Yeah, this looks good.
Some of them are carryovers from last year, like the recreation swimming pool one. That was approved last year, but we didn't, it's in a holding account or restricted account. But I wanted you to know that it could be, you know, um, we could be spending that money this year once you start renovating, whatever they're gonna do over there.
You know, there's one there, that first one under the airport, where it says airport improvement grant design. They're, they're in the middle of that now, they're, they, they didn't stop that part of it. What isn't in here is the actual grant that we approved for the taxiway.
I have says design a taxiway, that's all it says.
They just, that's the next step and they're not gonna do it, so it's not.
And they said maybe the fund deal will break loose and it'll be done in twenty twenty-two, but they didn't know yet.
Um, the one thing I, I did want to kind of throw out is about this American Recovery Plan Act that we'll be spending money on. It is really, really important that I be involved with all of that paperwork, whatever the format is or whatever. Because that's gonna be a huge audit with auditors next year, just like the CARES Act this year was. So I.
Submitted that report, I had to have Reed come over because it doesn't really match like the paperwork that Carol gave me, like I had to input that.
But whatever I can get into a file folder and save now as we keep going, it'll help a lot with.
Cause I use the template from NACO, and so it didn't match what was there.
The graph where the, the amounts were, like I just carried them over, but yeah, it didn't look exactly the same.
We just talked it out. Decided, yeah, that that's where it should go.
So maybe in the future, can you print out what it, what the report looks like before you? Yeah, I know, a lot of them won't.
Where I thought you were just going to download.
Well, sorry.
It wasn't hard, it was just making sure we had things in the right spot that I had.
Okay, well, good.
So my understanding of the policy on grants is that when any department applies for them. Those applications should come to the auditor for me to put them on the agenda for the board to approve. And then once any sub awards or awards are granted, those also have to come to me to be put in my file for the auditors. But I don't think those awards have to come back before the Board of Commissioners.
When they do a sub award, I mean, when they do the sub award.
Yeah, does that, I don't think it has to.
Usually those are just, at least the ones I see, I'm involved in are just date changes more than.
So let's say I want to apply for a grant. Then I would do whatever I need to to fill out the paperwork, but I wouldn't actually submit it. Until it goes to you and it gets board approval.
That's the way I understand.
I'm saying.
We're behind with this. That I'm presenting to you today, but as of today, we should look forward to doing it correctly.
And then the challenge is, a lot of them are online, like the pool pack, pool pack grant, for instance, and so. I filled it out.
She can't print.
But I, well, I printed it for what it was worth, I mean. But I, well, I printed it for what it was worth. I mean, it doesn't give me an option to print, but I've screen printed it. And then, um, I didn't submit it. And the way it is, I've lost it because it says you can save it, but you can't save it. And so I will, I will take my printed copy and then re-enter it again once this is approved. But then there's other grants and stuff that I don't know how they, they work, you know, if you do a page at a time before you can go on.
Well, Sean and I have been, well, I haven't had to resubmit, but we've had several conversations with the state and the same thing has happened with these Zoom grants. They're not there and then he's got to go back in and, and redo them and it, it's kind of, I know it's the new generation of how they want it done, but it, it's kind of the pits to have the hard copy.
Yeah, and the CDB, CDB, that, that grant.
Yeah.
Um, yeah. That one, I was able to put the information in and it did save without submitting it, you know, until you were ready to submit, but they're all so different. And, um, I just wanted to make sure.
Yes, I understand.
Maybe, you know, just acknowledgement that the grant being applied for, because it still has to, once it's awarded, you guys still have to approve.
Yeah.
You know, expending the funds and the match.
So maybe instead of actually filling out the whole pack grant application, maybe just send me some kind of an email that says, you know, I want to apply for this pool pack grant for.
For X amount.
It's an online grant, so I can't give you the application right now, but please get it on the agenda.
So this one I think is a good example. This is the other one we, I talked about with, you know, we did the CDDG. And then I ran across this other one that could pay for the electric.
Right.
It's through ADSD. And I'm waiting for some numbers to be able to put into this, but the application dated to October 26th, a week from yesterday. So I'll have to be in.
So in that case, we verbally talked about it and then I got it on this report for today.
So, oh, I, I guess I just have to see if we, if we go further and then I'll work with you on the application. I mean, that's to be ashamed to pass up that money if it's, if it's available.
So would you like, um, a motion to approve the grant? So I'll make a motion to approve the grants that have been listed and provided, um, for us by the board recorder. Oh, second.
So motion in the second, all those in paper. I motion passed. Okay, we have a 10 o'clock. I saw you back there somewhere.
James.
I'm in the building department. I don't have anything very additional to report on the office other than, uh, I can't remember, I told you guys at the last meeting, but I asked my Dan, um, commercial builders.
Oh, you, you did? You've got that one? Great. Good.
Thanks for taking that.
Yeah, because we're going to need. Yeah.
That one was really tough.
So are there any others that you have that you're thinking about taking?
Um, I could do, yeah, there's other, there's other commercial ones that, your commercial electric plumbing, um, that, that way, but I want to let this commercial one set for a little bit. But yeah, there are other ones that I need.
Okay, good.
I would like you to take at least one of your, please.
There are, there are ones on the residential side that I can probably do to the plumbing and.
Yeah. Whether it's commercial or residential, at least one.
Yeah, I'll try to do it.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
And then you probably have renewals too.
That, that's the tough part is the more certificates you get, the more CDUs you have to get, but having, having different dates. And, and it's hard to find places that offer those CDUs. Um, like I'm having a heck of a time trying to find, um, someplace where I can get electrical CDUs to renew my residential electricity. So I I have a, I have another year to, to find that, to find the CDUs. Then this one was good because when I, since I got the commercials, um, inspector, they made it to where you get, since I have a commercial, residential and, um, now a the building inspector, since I have three certs, they put them all under one door. I only have to do, get one set of CDUs that renews three certifications. So I just have to try, try to find the CDU, which might be maybe going to Colorado. That might be an option to get CDUs for.
Do they do that online at all, Colorado?
No.
Okay.
No, their, their, their stuff is, for whatever reason, their stuff is so secret, secret squirrel stuff and, and proprietary then. It, it's in person, they have, whoever's in the class has to advise on the students. Um, it's, so they don't offer.
Is this the same one you did in Vegas for your commercial?
They have a, they have an actual school in Colorado. They, they, they offer different classes and you can.
Okay.
Anyway, thank you.
You're welcome.
So you want to go into the public hearing on number eight?
Number eight is the, uh, it's 14.
Yes, 14A is the Persian Solar LLC.
Yeah, and it is a request for your review and approval of the special use permit on the APN 733151. Six two, six three, six four and six six. Now this matter was before the planning commission on, uh, October 6th. Um, and they conditioned, they approved, um, or recommended approval of the special use permit. On, on condition that they enter into a more robust road agreement with the county. That, that's Indy Energy and AES, right? The IADS, Clean Energy. As well as, um, before construction, they would have to demonstrate removal of water rights from that particular.
Oh, gotcha. Yeah.
And it was approved for is one name. Um, well, then, then just hear our representatives.
I know, Linda, you have a question.
No, I have a statement. The removal of water rights is a little funny and.
Water can be.
And I had, uh, recommended, uh, during the discussion that it be a personal map and, and recorded on the, on the title. That did not get into the actual motion. But, uh, looking at some of my own water right issues, I found that, uh, there is an NRS 533.384. Sorry, Bryce, I didn't look that one up. But that basically states that it's a requirement for water rights to be recorded with the, with the D. On my own issue, uh, I, my predecessor on my land had bought water rights because the water right chain had not been down on the property that had been removed from the state engineer denied. So this, uh, in our statute specifies that that water right should be tracked on deeds.
So it's 533.
Five point three point three eight four. And, and the wording that they used on my report was, uh, the individual never filed a report of conveyance as required by NRS 533.34. And therefore, since they had not filed that, the state engineer had to go back to the previous filing and say that those water rights were still there. I, I think that requirement and take the burden off of change to try to sort through all the smoke and mirrors to know that, yes, indeed, water rights have really been. And I, I'd really like to remove that subjectiveness. Because after all, the, the land, uh, is currently being farmed, so it has headaches, it has ditches, it has levees. And so it really looks like prime farm. Unless that is separated out or a personal map and the change.
Ms. Boland, do you have some comment? You want to come up? I guess both of you.
All three of you. Yeah, just. Pull up the chair.
Morning, Karen.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Linda Bullard, uh, on behalf of Persian Solar LLC. Introduce yourselves.
Matt Gordon.
Nice to meet you.
Matt is new to the team, so you haven't met him before. Um, yeah, we've got the whole, you know, the whole presentation that we could put on for you if you're interested. There's probably not much new, um, since last time we were here. Do you, you've got, we just put it up on the screen, I guess. And, uh, but, um, as, as you all know, I mean, this is, uh, a continuation of, for lack of a better word, phase one of the project.
You, you knew my comments.
Yes, to be, to be clear, I mean, it is not, uh, going to be a phased project. It's just that the, the special use permitting piece of this was phased because of the need to have the ordinance changed to allow for solar development on this land. So that's my, for lack of a better word, we're using the word phase, but it isn't really going to be phased. And if you want more details about how the construction is actually going to occur.
Just, so everybody knows where my comments were made and where my concern was. Normally you would see phase two after phase one. That is not the case in this one. Some way that was my concern. Go ahead.
Yeah, I was just going to agree with the, yeah, this semantics.
Yes, yes, yes.
It is one, one.
Um, just, maybe you could just give Matt, who's taken over for Bridget, who you have met before, but Matt, if you wanted to just real quickly, you know, what the, but again, using the word phase, phase one was what, phase two was what, just a real quick explanation of that.
In, in the sense of the going through the approval.
Well, the acreage and, you know.
Sure.
One more.
There you go. Yeah, so phase one, the SUP approval was, was March, uh, 2020. And so that was for 2,154 acres. And so, um, in interim.
Excellent.
Right, so then in the interim, the agricultural preservation code, it wasn't included, um, on the 17th of this year, um, to allow solar energy added as a allowable use, uh, as part of the SUP. And so that phase two is essentially 710 acres. Would combine, have brought down to about 2,800 acres.
Any other questions on the phasing piece?
Now, maybe, um, just flip over to the project schedule.
More, more. Okay, yep. So, um, our next big milestone is in February of 22, we'll begin, um, the design and engineering within the energy. That really is looking at the interconnection piece and what additional facilities need to be, um, designed in order to put this project to be connected uh, to the grid. Continuing on from there, um, we will begin designing engineering the broader, broader project, building permits, uh, bringing in an RFP for a, uh, an actual contractor to build, um, and design and build project. And then we're targeting July 2023 when construction would begin, uh, and commercial operation in 2024.
So on that, where do you see Indy Energy and the PPA?
Yeah, so we are currently working on that now. Um, our goal is to have that executed within 2022. That's what we need in order to keep on schedule.
In order to keep going.
Exactly, to keep going, keep on schedule. So we are actively doing that piece.
Okay.
We want it to happen as much as you guys do.
Yeah.
Um, and then I guess if you want to flip over to the next one, um, and we've, we've gone through all this before. And, you know, again, with the approval, um, of the phase one, um, I think at that time we had demonstrated to you, you know, consistency uh, with the Persian County Master Plans and with the county code section, um, that, that allowed for, generally for solar development. Um, does anybody have any questions or going to detail about that? You know, again, it highlights, you know, we think that this, um, is, you know, the preservation generally of the, of the agricultural nature of the community. And I think that that's one of the overarching considerations that we've heard over and over again throughout this entire process. People don't want blah, blah, they don't want Persia, so Persian County to change appreciably. You don't want to have a huge influx of residents, that kind of thing. And this is a kind of project that both, um, provides economic benefit to the county generally, the tax revenue. But certainly during construction, you've got an influx of workers and people that are buying gas at the gas stations and drinking coffee at the coffee shop and buying lunches and so forth. So there's, there, it's overall a positive net benefit to economically to the community without the drain of resources. It doesn't, it's not going to require, there's not going to be a lot of new residents as a result of it. It's not going to require new schools and police and so forth. So, um, it's something that, you know, we've seen overall as a positive economic boost to, to communities that have had the good fortune of having these projects located in them. So this, again, with phase two is a minor addition to what you'd approved before, but, you know, it makes the project an economic benefit to the community and just a little bit more so than it was before. And of course, since the time, um, that we got the prior approval here, we have had the addition of, um, the, the new section of the code, the new provision, section 17.108.25. And I think we demonstrate that as well. This is not prime farm land. I know we've all gone around and around on that issue, um, before. And I don't, we don't have Dan Nysley here today. He was at the planning commission speaking to that point. Uh, we have prepared a decommissioning plan, um, that, um, will provide for and guide restoration at the end of the effective life, which is 30 years.
Yeah, 35 years.
35 years in this case. And, you know, allows for both removal, decommissioning the plant, restoration of the area. Which of course 30 years around, we leave it to these guys to oversee, but, um, so, uh, just in some, you know, we, we believe that, um, the addition of this, these acres are consistent with the county code and the master plan. And, um, following the recommendation of the planning commission, we request your approval.
Good job.
Yeah, I don't have any questions.
No.
Are you ready for a motion?
Do we need to add a new?
There's, there's a few things.
I'm not sure about the NRS 533.
I'm not quite sure I understood what Carl was saying and I need that.
And clarify.
If I just might, um, certainly whatever the requirements are in the state statute, this one, we have to adhere to. And I don't have the advantage of having it in front of me to, to.
So I was going to reference that in my motion of the.
So I think that it, it should be approved with three conditions. And under our code, especially this permit can be conditionally approved. Condition number one would be that we have a road use agreement. Uh, and I'm sorry, I was called. It's either Persian S power or Persian solar, but now it's ADS.
Well, still the, it's still, it'll be Persian Solar LLC. It's still the project company that's entering.
Yep.
So we will have a new road maintenance agreement, road use agreement. In place 90 days prior to construction. And that will also include a traffic safety plan along with a road use agreement. I think that, uh, ADS or Persian Solar needs to enter to a, a road use agreement with N B Energy, namely Persian County, a third party beneficiary. Uh, because I know that N B Energy is going to be performing or they're going to be constructing, uh, a power plant out there and they're going to be impacting our roads a great deal. So that needs to be in place 90 days prior to that occurring. Actually, there's four conditions. There needs to be a demonstration that the water rights have been removed from that property. And of course, as Linda referenced, it has to be, has to comply with state law. And then the fourth condition is that the bond for the decommission plan needs to be approved by this board 90 days prior to construction.
Now you can make a motion.
Well, yeah, but now it's really complicated. Okay, I'm going to give it a shot. So I'm going to go ahead and make a motion to approve the special use permit for Pershing Solar and AES and whoever else has been through this. With the findings that the planning commission made under 17.606.40, as well as a requirement that 90 days prior to construction, that we have a road agreement in place with Pershing County and Indy Energy.
No, that would be between Pershing Solar and, and the county.
And the county, okay. That we also have a traffic safety plan in play, place that in accordance with NRS 533.384, that there is a demonstration of removal of water rights prior to construction and that there is also 90 days prior to construction that there is a bond in place with a decommission plan that's been approved by the county commissioners.
And a road use agreement between Pershing Solar and Indy Energy.
Okay.
With Pershing County naming it as a third party beneficiary that Pershing County has actually approved.
Okay, so I will add that, Lacy, to that. Did I cover it all?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second all of the paper, the motion.
Thank you. It's great seeing you guys.
I just want to see dirt moving and.
It's going to be a while. I won't be on the commission when you finally get around to that. I only have a year and two months left.
Thanks, you guys.
Are you term limited or?
Yeah, I'm term limited. I'm very term limited. Yeah, it's a good thing we have.
Well, I hope you'll keep you guys apprised when.
Oh, yeah.
That's our living.
Yes, thank you. Thank you for making the trip.
Oh, it's not a pleasure.
So we have a second public hearing, which is for Williams Family Trust.
This item was also heard before the planning commission on October 6. Basically, what they, what Dan Nysley is going to be buying this, to take away this property from these folks. And they, they understand that the piece of property isn't going to be built right. They, they just want to continue to own a piece of land in, in the county so they can come and visit it when they, when they, when they pass through. This is up off of, parcel A, Indian Caper. So it was unanimously approved by the planning commission as well.
James, I'm sorry, didn't get to come talk to you before this agenda item. So it's an ag deferred parcel, which will need to be leaned i- if the 2.5 acres is changing its use. So.
They're not changing.
So how will it qualify for A? This is similar to, we just had Julie Knights, I have to lean her parcel, it was also approved.
Right.
And so we don't have any format. And James and I usually have better communication and I'll, I'll, on my part of being so busy with our appraisal cycle, I haven't been over to see him. And it dawned on me when I started to process Mrs. Knights that now I have to, it's been approved. So I have to convert her 2.5 acres and attach a lien. The, the better process would be is if the liens were applied first and then the approval. But we don't seem to have a procedure for that. So I was just concerned that I might get in the same situation with this one. Any ag use that's 600 or higher, all of the 600s, once you change the use, converts it to higher use.
And then they have to pay back taxes.
Yes, for seven years. So I've already got one pickle on my hands. And, and then, and I, you know, apologize again, James, for not getting over to visit with you. But it, it just caught my eye this morning.
So that would be on the 2.19.
I, it would, that's the part that would be taken out of A. That's my understanding.
Yeah.
From what I've read here. And then the new owner, if the 602 acres is selling, has to requalify. And these are all statutes that cause messes for leaning and billing and everything. I mean.
But for purposes of this, I mean, that's, that, that's not anything that, that my office has control over. And nor, nor does it say in, in any of my statutes or code that that has to be done prior to this. So for all intents and purposes for this, there's no reason that it can't be.
So when you say prior, you just mean that the person would be notified prior that this is an implication of what they're trying to do?
Anytime an ag parcel is involved, it converts to a higher use, which qualifies it for an ag lien. So other counties have steps that they go through and maps are not approved or even recorded until, and I'm not telling our county what to do, but if I don't see these on here until after they're approved, then I have a situation with the taxpayer on how do we then even attach the lien, you know, to their parcel for the seven years deferred taxes.
And just so you know, for my purposes, when I, when, when we get parcel maps, I give them the worries off us. As soon as I get them, I give them to her office.
Yeah.
So what happens after that is out of my control.
And he does. He's very good about it.
So is, I'm sorry, the 2.19 is the only one that would be affected by.
That's my understanding.
But, but the 602 would have to demonstrate that they are still going to be in.
If it's being sold, yes, but that's a whole different topic.
That's okay.
Right. So, you know, I don't know how we can, James does bring them to me, but we don't seem to have any format of like when they get recorded or approved. You know, in some counties, it's like, once the ag liens apply, then they get recorded or, or approved. And I'm not saying here that I want to switch it, but we don't seem to have steps. So James is right, he brings them over, but I often don't realize that they're on for approval until I see them on the agenda, just because of my workload currently. So I don't know if the owners are aware that they will be receiving a, a lien.
So do you want to wait and inform the owners?
It's whatever you all want to do. I just want you to know that I'll be notified.
I'm not sure how that's my responsibility to notify owners of a person. I mean, that's, that's not my responsibility.
If, if it's a ag use 600 and it's a map, you know, that the planning commission or the board of commissioners is approving, you can assume there'll be a, a lien if it's changing the configuration of the parcel.
So could you find out how other counties do this to alleviate this issue? Just a very simple thing. And then do we want to go ahead today and approve this? So I'll make a motion to go ahead and approve this.
I'll second.
You have any comments? We have a motion and a second all in favor.
Aye.
Motion.
Thank you for your time.
No, but if you could find out just how they close that gap easily.
Because now, you know, once you approve it, there's really, it's very difficult to get them to pay their seven years lien. So, yeah, if we could come up with some steps would be great.
Okay. Appreciate that.
Thank you, Lori.
I know this has been, this has come up several times now.
Yeah.
Sheriff Allen, we can go back to you.
Thank you, James.
Eighteen, eighteen, thirty, we're at the tail end of having some COVID issues within the jail. I still have two deputies out with COVID, five open positions for deputy, which the undersheriff provided me today. Apparently somebody came in from one of my yesterday's applications.
Oh, good.
We have two that are currently in backgrounds for potential. And then once we get the application background back for this other applicant.
So you have two in background, but, but you have three in post.
So we have three, I have three in the academy, they're going to just graduate. Though we retain it. And then, but I still have five of them. Yes, we're working extremely short staff, so we're, we're all rotating schedules to make sure, make shifts work. That kind of stuff, so. And then, I don't know if you briefly.
I have not.
Okay, we had a, Larry and I had a full conversation yesterday with architects there about the building site that currently is in some different configurations. The architects are not, not hopeful with the, the configuration we currently have in terms of footprint, even if we were to give the metal shop.
Right.
So.
It just, when you look at the plot plan, but, and there was four different scenarios, I think.
Yeah, four different layouts, and that was cutting out.
It does.
On half a block or three quarters of a block, they can't put a jail on it.
It's not, they, they can't do the configuration now, leave the current building as it is and then swap them over. Yeah.
So we have them looking at one other option and.
If it was all just clear land, yeah.
Right, yeah.
So.
They're looking at another option and when we see that, then we can put it on the agenda and talk about it some more.
And but the proposed building wasn't, wasn't multi-layered, right?
No, it was all single level.
Well, we did a two-story.
Yeah.
They didn't have a proposal for that, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then on the metal shop, are they still working on?
Yes, they're still working on. They haven't put anything apart in the paper yet. They've been discussing it with the two gentlemen that own the, the building. I'll reach out and go and get today and see if I can get them to have some numbers for us or some kind of information for the next commissioner meeting.
And then, you know, there's the motel behind you, the wagon wheel.
Yeah.
I mean, a covered wagon, I can remember. I just remember part of it. Is that possibly for sale?
I don't know.
She's in China.
She. Well, no, I know, but Lori's in communication with her somehow, so.
Yeah.
We did talk about that yesterday.
Yeah, we talked about using the, the triangular section, but whether or not it's for sale, I have no idea.
Yeah, but that would be a possibility to look at. And, you know, you can use it for, you know, like your vehicles, you know, like what you have now or something. I don't know.
And, and there's a lot of potentials, you know, a lot of areas.
Okay, no more time given. So now our item number seven. Purge County amended plan for the provision of indigent defense services. Contractor services by an independent contractor between Pershing County and KW Paralegal Services LLC should provide the objectives and obligations with the Pershing County amended plan as approved by Nevada Department of Indigent Services in the amount of $50 per document submitted. Travel $20 per hour and reimbursement of lodging, travel and meals that the county standard for them.
So this is a contract that the county must have with a court administrator who is now required by state law to make appointments on the, at least the third tier for the issue of public defense. So the way that it works is that essentially we have an office of a public defender and we have a contract conflict council. If Steve Comperon, our public defender, has a conflict of interest, then the case is assigned to Kyle Swanson, our contract public defender for conflict counsel. If Kyle has a conflict, then we have, under contract, KW Paralegal Services must appoint an attorney to take over that case due to the conflict. And this contract provides for that selection process and also provides for her compensation.
And of course, you looked this over and everything's good.
I wrote it.
So it probably is okay.
You know, this is interesting, the Indian Defense Commission, they also have a contract with KW Paralegal Services. So we hired her and before we could do a contract, the Indian Defense Commission told her that she couldn't work for us unless they had a contract with the, unless she had a contract with the Indian Defense Commission. And her contract says that she can be let go for cause or for any reason really. And if the Indian Defense Commission does that, suddenly someone that we've contracted with for services can't work for us. So it's, and there's, there's no state law that allows them to do that. And there's no, there's no legal for what they've done, so.
Sometimes it's a challenge.
We're going along through the process, trying to work with people and do the best we can under this, this new law that they've imposed upon us. So hopefully it'll work out. I'm sure it'll be fine. But I would ask, I would recommend approval of the contract. And I think, I believe that Kelly, who was the paralegal under KW Paralegal Services, has already signed it.
I'll make the motion to approve the contract with KW Paralegal Services. And I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second all in favor. Proclamation and awards. We have one. She's not here.
Mary, can I, I mean.
Well, please extend her, our thanks.
Yeah.
Five years already.
Bass Valley Advisory Board, we already did. Board appointments, I know we have a couple in here.
I also need the board to declare a vacancy on the cemetery board due to the passing of Sherri Pierce. If it's okay, I would make that motion.
I'll second.
Move motion and a second all in favor.
One from Doris Bridges for the recycling board. And I'll make the motion to approve.
And I'll second.
Motion and a second all in favor.
Aye.
Motion passed. NAS Fallon Expansion Discussion of Engineer Recommendations for Rerouting of Pauline Road and County.
Oh, wait, there's the economic development too. And.
Oh, there was still one more on there?
Yes, there's economic development and Mike Springfield is stepping down and he would like Shantae to be put in his place with Cora Rochester.
From Core.
There is also a Natalie that would like to be.
I don't know who that.
I don't know who that is. So I'll make a motion that we approve the first one, Shantae. Cora Rochester's been a good partner on that board.
I will second.
The motion and a second all in favor.
Aye.
And if we could send a, a letter to the other applicant, Lacy, thanking her for her interest, appreciate it.
So there again, NAS Fallon Expansion Discussion of Engineer Recommendations for Rerouting Pauline Road and the County Preface. So did we have something from them?
Just the report for Pershing County or Churchill County. And did you get that, that Bryce forwarded?
I did see that.
I don't.
I don't. I don't know where to go with that, I don't, I, I understand Churchill County's reservations. But the, the alternatives that the Navy has proposed. I well, that the engineer, the engineers have proposed, I, I don't know where.
I mean, they had several options.
Yeah, and the thing is, is, is we're putting in how many miles of road to replace a twenty-six mile road. And, and it'll, we will maintain it unless the Navy uses it. We will be up for maintaining.
We will be.
So is it? You guys give me guidance on where you want to go because as far as I'm concerned, the Navy can work with whoever needs to cross that twenty-six mile road.
You know, what I do see happening is that they do that, uh, the road was, which was their preference. Uh, I, I would see more local Persian County people using that.
I think so.
Oh, yeah, because it's, it's right here, where the other way, you gotta go out and around the long way.
The one going by Love Lock Cave, is that?
Yeah, way out, yes, yes, to that. I, I could just see more local people using that. Yes, sir.
Um, I'm sorry, I don't know what town people recommended. Conservation District certainly has some interests in especially around the Love Lock Cave area. We recommend the eastern route as the acceptable route, where the other two just west of the Love Lock Cave and then the one along the sink are very undesirable. Reason being, Mike Sterling has put some corrals down just directly north of the Love Lock Cave road where, where it goes up the hill. He's watering the cattle there, it's going to be a good road.
That's an extra one.
Suggestion of going east of the Love Lock Cave and lead these there. Then if you go along the sink, um, that, I've, I've driven that years ago, and that is just loaded with dark fat. That is very desirable, plus it goes right to the cattle watering area and it's in a flip pen, so those are, are very cool.
Which one is? Is that, is that three C?
Yes.
Three, three C. That was the one I had bent over because it was, but it, it's the one that you feel would be the better of all of them?
The other thing that was discussed in Churchill County that Carol was at was it went to the road. And they're proposing a twelve-foot white road. If equipment, farm equipment goes over that, wheel spacing is totally, that's just not going to work. And the fellow, I don't remember his name from Churchill County that is on the commission, but is also the head of the road department, he said it's gotta be twenty feet.
Right, right.
Yeah, and, and I did read that in the reports. I think that if they're gonna send farm equipment over any of these roads, whether it's the, what is it, sand hill road in Churchill County, they ought to be to county codes.
Right, and that's what was requested by Churchill.
Good, yes.
Is that they needed to be by that.
So do we, do we need to submit our proposal, or do I need, what, where do we go next?
They wanted to know which one we preferred, is what they wanted to know.
Okay, so the next meeting I won't be at. So on that, I can probably do it via Zoom.
Hey, it's up to you, whatever you wanted to do.
I will let you know.
Okay, all right. Because I do want to talk to.
I will call, um, and talk to Commander Bayer and, and, um, Miss, and Rob, Robert, so, and let them know.
I think if I remember correctly, Churchill's comments were basically that they ju, they want the bomb site moved.
Yeah, you know, they, they don't want, they don't want to work with them, they just want the, well, the range moved.
Yeah.
And this, this is the reason for the expansion of this range is basically the, um, Top Gun trainer right now said, um, they use GPS bombs, and they usually hit where they send them, but things can happen. And it's not so much airspace, it's just that larger buffer to protect the public in case something goes wrong.
My understanding from previous presentations was, um, sometimes the battery fails, and so it just continues on the path that was on for the battery failures.
Yes.
And that happened like one out of eight thousand times or something. Very recent.
Yeah, but they want to protect the public from incidences like that, so. I, I get while they're doing, why they're doing this, um, I don't honestly see in the meetings that I've attended and Carol's attended, um, there is pushback from everybody, I, I don't know where this is gonna go. It'll probably move forward whether anybody likes it or not eventually.
Yeah.
But, um, we can only put our, our recommendations in and hope for the best. I was, um, have you ever heard of the Thompson Act? They will, um, compensate whoever has grazing land out there.
Or mine.
Because of the time, yeah, because of the Thompson Act. As for water.
Three C is really our preference.
Yeah, do you want me to make a motion?
I do, okay.
You're not finished, great.
As for the water, they will work with, they don't think anybody's got water rights out there, but they will work with whoever, if they do, they will wo, work with them to divert water. With that.
There's not much ag out there for them to have water rights.
Yeah. So with that, I'll make a motion to pre- approve, um, Pauline Road realignment, alternative three C, and present that to, and I'll say.
We have a motion and a second for alternative three C. As far as the preference, favorite motion?
Aye.
I motion that.
Thank you, Carl.
Thanks, Carl.
Your input's very valuable at those meetings, thank you.
The question I have is, there was a North River Route Two, uh, where they were talking about possibly going through Muddelberry Cave.
Right, yeah.
Uh, and as far as I'm concerned, by the time you ride a piece of public that far, you might as well go up to Cope Canyon.
Yeah.
And then come down, so.
Yeah.
That would be.
And that still had the, the terms and stuff on it.
Yes, but not as bad as Muddelberry.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay, number thirteen, Derby Field Airport, uh, we've already talked about that a little bit, you know, then I have to report as we do have a board meeting next week. Number fifteen.
Oh, and you'll have your hanger agreement on that agenda?
Uh, yes, it will be discussed. Did it get on the agenda? Good question.
Because it's supposed to.
Update on emergency management relating to COVID- nineteen list of proposed projects. I mean, you, you know where I'm coming from and I, and I sincerely believe and request that we commit funding for that airport water line.
The infrastructure bill, though, I think that, I'm not saying we don't, we've got it on the list, but if we're able to use the infrastructure funds, and right now the, the, um, the Emily Water Tank is the most important one to get going on that. And then, um, the airport water system, we had four hundred thousand, and now you think it's gonna be more like.
We don't know what pipe cost is gonna be.
We'll have to wait.
I, but if you at least commit, even if you commit to that.
We have to, we can't commit to it, we can say we want to do it, but we have to have public hearings on this. We have to basically find out what our public thinks is the most important projects, and that's where we need to go now, we need to put it out there and have public hearings on it to figure out, present these to our, our constituents, and find out which ones are most important to them, because they have to, they have a decision in this, and that's the way this recovery act is written. So if we're gonna move forward, we, we need to have public hearings on all of these projects.
And also get input for other projects that the public might have. One of the things I was gonna suggest is that we, I believe we can use, um, these funds for, um, have someone to help our IT department because of all the, everything that has happened with Zoom too. And that's something that we need to talk about either through this or the budget. You know, to go forward, because Justin needs help, and there's no question about that.
That sounds like we need to set a date for some public hearings.
We do.
And let's set a date.
Just remember, um, November, after November third, I will be attending everything via Zoom for a month.
So you'll be back, what?
I.
December first?
I am planning to be back December first.
Okay. So we have our meeting that day, we could, we could have the public hearing as part of our agenda that's December first. Yeah, December first, I mean, it's not like we're gonna do these things tomorrow.
Yeah.
There's time. Um, Larry, is there someone interested in putting a business out at the airport or putting hangars or something?
People, I mean, that, that, we get these calls all the time, uh, about people wanting to put in a hanger. We have hanger space, uh, we have to tell them we don't have water, and it stops like that.
And, and until we know, if, until we approve an agreement too, to know what kind of rental amount or something that we get for putting the hanger there.
There is no lease until you have a customer.
I understand, but we also talked about having a hanger agreement, we've got two people out there now with hangers that we don't have agreements with.
So we want this public hearing, is that one o'clock, or what do we want to, how do you want to put it in there?
I mean, you could put it.
You want it just during the meeting?
During the meeting, probably, like ten or something.
It's like ten o'clock. Karen, can you do that? Um, in our next a, agenda to put at least, uh.
I notice.
So do we have? December first at ten AM. Oh, that's usually planning, it is, so.
So nine thirty or after eleven or?
So eleven o'clock can be better.
And we have like three years to spend these funds or commit these funds, so.
Yes.
Okay, number sixteen is follow-up on department head meetings. Employee morale incentives, future position needs and funding allocations. Commission bill settings and, uh, positive.
So I think we had a good meeting with the department heads, and we talked about maybe doing it quarterly so that we can, you know, get input from them, but, um, we need to talk about, you know, what kind of incentives for our employees, and I don't know, you know, we give people, um, awards for being five, ten years or whatever, maybe there needs to be a monetary amount too that goes with that to some degree, and I haven't figured out yet what that cost would be, but, um, and then also it was mentioned about having, the department has having a budget so that they could, um, do things for their employees, like purchase, you know, shirts or something like that, or also pay for lunches when they have to work through lunchtime or, or something as well. So those are things that I think it's important that we.
I think we should look at that when we do our budgets next year.
There was coming up January, February, that's not that far away.
No, it's not, but, um, I think that would improve. Well, and like Lacy said, um, I know when I was on the school board, we had shirts that said Persian County, granted that the trustees paid for them themselves, but if they're going to represent our county, I would like to see them wearing the county shirts.
So we can discuss that when we.
I would love to discuss it through in budgets.
Okay. And then like Gold said in, in direction for the commission, I mean, which, would you like to, you know, actually sit down and talk about what is our mission statement, where, where do we want to go? Or do you want to just continue to do what we do when we do it?
I had a couple of comments from, uh, department heads that they didn't think, uh, incentives were needed. So I don't know that we're going on the right path there.
Did they have any other suggestions on how to improve?
They didn't have issues, so.
So their departments don't have any issues?
Right.
Their department, but I would like to see that our county employees know that they're appreciated, I mean, they're, they work hard for us.
Totally agree.
And I think that, that.
I do it in person, I pat them on the back.
Well, I go around too and, and talk to the different departments and, you know, tell them what a good job and wish them a good weekend and all that, but, you know.
And then the, the birthday card thing, we, we talked about, you know, doing, doing the birthday cards, so that's, I mean, that's a, that's a step, so we can do that. Probably anybody would appreciate that.
Okay, so we'll talk about monetary things during budgets.
Comment.
Yes.
Appreciation of work, departments, there. One of the best things that I have to give into is you three, maybe Bob's, whatever. Pick a day, go into their office, sit down, understand what has to go on behind the scenes to make all of the reports, to satisfy all ordinances, all the state laws, go to them, and. Go to them and hear what they have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you. There is a lot to be said for that because sitting here next to you guys, I understand part of it. I understand there's a lot of it. And Rain, I know what Rain does and I really appreciate Rain's office, especially during budgets. Cause I would wanna do that.
Bonnie, do you have any comments? We have, yeah, we have employees that are on Facebook and we do have an internet policy that prohibits that.
You see that, but you also see things that are out and about. Various times of the day, there's lunch periods too, I think, not completely, not completely. You don't make your own ideas slip, yes or yes to say. You don't make your own schedules, you know, and you kind of like that. We are all, you know, from a record official to me down at the bottom. You have put in place policies and procedures that were supposed to follow along with what the department had to make their own. The contravention. So I have made the strict two states to address policy success. Plus it's on, you know, Friday, we can rest on that. Because when we see it, everybody else's issue has been reduced. I love that. We still owe it to the people that favor Texas, that favors us, all the way from the top to the bottom. We represent them in a way that we should represent them. And we all the departments are against each other. They could let them take some of this to motion. I just need a lot of that. And I will say that pushing myself, that's why I have seen a lot. A lot of things that have been had along that. And I know what they're doing. So for me, that's why I don't want to. But I'm still a pass here also. And I'm gonna tell you, and I'm sorry, I'm going to name names. I have a librarian.
Yes.
Who expects me to do that, you know? But I can't get nothing out of her. She knew me Tuesday, I took Monday off, but she was sure that I was good to do that day. And he emailed Tuesday morning telling me that the library would be closed on Thursday and Friday because they were all attending the conference. And she knows these are, you know, in terms of account. So if they're not, it's like, it'll just happen. Okay, well, Lacey is the thesis. I made this, she sees this, it's me, I heard them, I still need to defer with the deadline. And there's been new instances that I had to call her. So at this point, I don't care if she don't get a name on me and I'm gonna do some check, she will pay the money. That's a costly thing, but she not gonna come. But it's like, I don't need to know anymore. I need to prove that I'm here. Nobody else cares.
We have a policy where the, the credit card can be pulled and that's what we would need to decide. Because if people aren't doing what they're supposed to be doing, then we need to pull the credit card and they can go through the process without the convenience of the credit card.
So I think we're at the point now that there has got to be some honest work spoken. So we all have thoughts. I'm personally, every day, I have one moment that I have to be done. I try to work on it, but you know.
Well.
I know, but I appreciate.
Needs to be said.
Yeah.
I mean, stuff like this, we need to have this conversation.
And we have people that come to work not at eight o'clock and take longer lunch hours, leave early in the day and.
Supervisors that, you know, take that power. They're not doing the thing. Need to, they don't feel that they're, and I know one department in particular knows that if they say they're running it in return, they've gotta be permanent. They don't wanna say anything. This is kind of stuff. They come to work, I give you every team. For the paycheck for that, I would need an extra incentive to help me come here and do a job that you're working. I have students that, you know, they want that incentive because that's what it's only about is the money that's within our provision. I don't know how to, I just feel afraid that there's gotta be a lot of asset people, there's gotta be a lot of lost people, there's gotta be a lot of people. We shouldn't be representing this pushing for me as long.
Working together.
You guys are talking about, we all should make that decision together as good. So we don't need to.
Shattered.
We're just.
Okay, so I think we've beaten that one up pretty good.
Thank you Bonnie, very much. Thank you.
Approval to send letter to Senator, to both senators and corporations in support of to introduce, I, I think that's reintroduced and, and enact the Persian County Economic Development and Conservation Act.
For the fourth or fifth time?
Yeah, that's what I say, reintroduce.
I will make the motion to send a letter to Senator Cortez Masto and Senator Jackie Rosen, encouraging to support. Encouraging to introduce the Persian County Economic Development and Conservation Act again.
And we have a a copy of a previous letter. We can probably change the date.
Yeah, I saw that.
And can we also copy Congressman Amateri as well? So I will second that.
I have a motion and a second. All of us in favor?
I.
I motion that. Any other questions, Bonnie? Litigation meeting?
Report from legal camp. Uh, so I reviewed the contract, the Medicaid contract. And my recommendation for me to sign that agreement and move forward start to fill the process for those services.
I will make the motion to approve the Medicaid contract.
And I will second that.
We have motion and a second for approval to do an application for a Medicaid provider. All of us in favor?
I.
I motion that. And then just one more item, the HVAC system. And there's one other piece of equipment associated with that for the senior center. So John had made solicitations for three bids because that contract amount is well under a hundred thousand dollars. And we received three bids and then the installation will not exceed, installation combined with the purchase of that equipment will not exceed a hundred thousand dollars. So I just asked him to solicit bids for the installation and then he'll put approval of those bids on the next agenda.
And that's for the CDBs, for the equipment itself?
Yeah.
The CBD G grant.
Right.
Okay.
I know he was trying to get the electric work updated, but I have not heard any results of them. Report from administrative assistant.
So Karen, as HR person and what Bonnie was saying, how can we go about making sure that people are here when they're supposed to be here and tightening up on some of those things? Do you have any suggestions?
The department is letting them do it or is doing it themselves.
Yeah.
Well, it's only, it's not everyone.
No, no, nobody's saying that, but for the ones that, we're aware of several. And.
If they're elected, then it's still up to the, have the department, you know, if they're not elected, then it is up to the county commissioners or commissioner that oversees that.
So if it's an elected official though, can we, we can still have guidelines. We have personnel policies that what's expected.
Sure.
We should be, and I mean, I could just like any other department, you know, I mean, we should. But another office, another office could see somebody coming in late. Their department head could have approved whatever issue is going on that they are from time to time coming in late. I rely that the permanent is overseeing their employees and working out their schedule. But unclassified, that's a different story because.
Justin has his hand. Larry.
Hi there. So the issue with people reporting in on time, taking their, their breaks on time, that's, that's one that's already been solved and it's been solved for a long time. That's requiring people to clock in, clock out.
Yeah.
And there are many ways we can time tracking system like that. That takes, that takes all the guests for account. Get employees are responsible for punching the clock they come in. And they take breaks, we're gonna be there one, we're gonna be there back. And then you get a report that documents all of that. That can be sent with employee time sheets or just in lieu of employee. So that's, that particular problem is actually similar to solve.
So what about individuals that are on, on work time that are on Facebook and different things like?
That's, that's another one that's is once we get our efforts on the utilization where we have, we can have those kinds of controls. That's just putting in some sort of buffer. So any traffic, any traffic that tries to go on the internet has to go to this filter curves. And if it's to something that's not, and it's, this is something I get a lot. You can set up groups and different filtering levels for different groups. You can set up hold at times so that you know a, a person has so much time where they're allowed to access things that are normally restricted. But when they're out of time, then that's it, they're done. And so it turns over again. So that is some, that is an actual practice too, is some sort of buffer. To do that right now, we will have to implement it several times over. Once we, once we finish some of these other kind of projects, we won't have to copy and paste that solution as many times as in at least the four central buildings here will be on one height of the internet that can. There might be some ways to implement that beforehand. That will
I just think it's a shame that we would have to revert to anything when people should just on their own. You know, be reasonable and insta. And then like the same thing with time clocks. I know that there, there are individuals, I mean, that's like not trusting them in a sense. If we would just get so that we would do what we're supposed to do when we're supposed to be there.
I, I wanna chime in on this.
Yeah.
Because this is not agendized, right? And this is the type of item that if there's gonna be any additional discussion on, the employee should be in.
Well, we need to discuss it in a department head meeting and stuff too because there's pros and cons and lots of cons with that.
So this.
I was gonna say, you go to a time clock. When I was at EP, if they punched in two minutes late, they were docked fifteen minutes and that was part of their new contract. They knew, they were aware of that. And then if they punched out early, same difference, they were not.
Well, and it's also a nightmare to sit there on the time card and figure all like, all that out. Cause I've done that before. It is, yeah.
So that brings us to items for future agendas.
I don't have anything.
Matters of the board for discussion. Shiva.
Okay, we had a rec board meeting last night.
Oh, how did that go?
They will start, he is having issues getting supplies to start. As soon as he gets those supplies, he will start the repairs. They, I didn't.
Yeah, I'm sorry, repairs to what?
The pool.
The pool, thank you. I, I'm sorry, I'm here.
They.
So that company then that's supposed to do it?
Terra firma. So they're just waiting on, they did get the new coordination system. They are waiting on the, whatever liner they put on it, it has plastic leaves in it. And had we started the pool last summer when instead of just repairing it, it would have been done. But we waited and, you know, you've gotta get these things in stock. They are looking at seeing what the final price comes in for the pool repairs. If it comes in and they have leftover money in that account, they would like to purchase a water slide with stairs because the water slides and steps are, are not ADA compliant and they're already outdated. They more than likely will if they replace, well, they will take down the high dive and either try and replace it with a water slide there or a load, another low dive. And then they're looking at forty thousand dollars for the filtration system, but that's down the road and because the one we have currently works, but we, the pool, we do need to replace the. Down the road and because the one we have currently works, but we, the pool, we do need to replace the pool filtration system.
What's the lifespan, estimated lifespan of the pool?
Fifty years.
Fifty?
Repairing it and bringing it all up to date, it'll add fifty years to the life.
Is that not going to be right?
Spending all this money will add another fifty years to the pool.
How much is it?
Was like a hundred and seventy?
A hundred and seventy eight thousand dollars.
For the pool lining?
And that's, that's what our estimate from Terraferma was. That was without the cost of the chlorination system, which the rec board already purchased. And that was another thirty thousand dollars. So we're going to see where his price comes in. They did do a walkthrough. Last, last week or two weeks ago. And basically Sean said, you need to have this, you need this. So it says within your budget, that's where we'll be. It's just waiting on the suppliers to.
And then the community donated too.
Yes.
And so there was what, like maybe sixty thousand, fifty eight thousand?
Yeah.
Yeah. That's been donated by the community.
I think that the board should write a letter to Jeff Bezos and say, instead of funding ten seconds of your crappy little space flight.
A five million dollar pool?
Good, good luck with that.
Um. See. Other than that, I don't have. Anything else you guys?
Are you going to Brass Valley at the end of the month?
I'm going to try. That is when Ralph is. Your presentation. And Monday, right?
I don't really have anything. We have a meeting, we're having cemetery boards coming up and hospital boards coming up. Nothing really.
I don't have anything really, TV board. I mean, Norm and I have been trying to get to the top of the mountain, but weather hasn't been cooperative. So we're, we're going to go tomorrow, but I don't know if we're going to make it or not.
And we're getting into snowy season.
And we, but we have to get up there once before.
Do we need a snow cat?
What's that?
You have a snow cat?
Yeah. At some times I wish the county had a snow cat, but we don't. Public input. Public comment and discussion, or action may be taken on a matter raised under this item of the agenda until the matter itself has been specifically included on that agenda as in my item upon which action will be taken. Public commentary will generally be limited to three minutes per person. Any public comments? Anybody on Zoom?
One that looks to be making a comment.
Okay, that brings us to approval of vouchers.
And we have our one o'clock. Board of members.